Eight couples there that I had never met before.
All right, we will call the order. This is Brainerd City Council.
Yeah.
November 3rd, 2025, in council chambers. Tony, please call the roll.
Stunek, Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Johnson.
Here.
Oday.
Here.
Fadell.
Will you stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we're looking for approval of the agenda.
No move.
Motion by Chesak, second by Bevins. Any discussion? None. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. We have an agenda. Number five, this is a consent calendar, notice to public. All matters listed are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the time the council votes on the motion to be adopted by roll call. Looking for a motion.
Move to adopt.
Second, Johnson.
Motion by Bevins, second Johnson. Any discussion? Tony?
Jaeger.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Bevins.
Yes.
Chesak.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Oday.
Yes. Moving to number six, this is the public forum. This is time allocated for citizens to bring matters not on the agenda to the attention of the council. Time limits may be imposed. So if there's anybody in here that would like to address the council on something not on the agenda, please do so now. Might as well open the public forum. 7:31. Again, if you want to address the council, please come forward now. If you're online, press star three. Asking one more time. Please address, please come forward if you'd like to address the council. We have none. Closing the public forum at 7:32. Next up, number seven, we have council committee reports. First up, we have Personnel and Finance Committee Chairman Gabe Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have eight items on the agenda tonight, the first of which is discussion. Nope, that's the last of which. The first of which is an approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Brainerd Public Utilities Managers and Supervisors Association Union. The motion is to approve the attached memorandum of agreement with the Public Utilities Department Managers and Supervisors Association to clarify benefits for union supervisors as presented in ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Johnson?
This was just a bit of a small oversight or whatnot. When we signed the agreement with that group, we, everything goes back to the employee policy manual. Well, our employee policy manual doesn't reference unionized supervisors. It only references non-union supervisors. Now that we have a group of union supervisors, we just clarified via an MOA that you still fall under the same benefits as a non-union supervisor.
Okay. More discussion on that? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. That motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. Next up is another MOA. This one is with the I U O E Street and Parks Divisions regarding the new Minnesota Paid Family Leave Law. And the motion is to approve the Paid Family Leave MOA with the I U O E Street and Parks Divisions as presented in ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
This is, as, as we had been planning the whole time, this is a 50/50 split on the withholding from the employer and the employee. And that's what these, these two bargaining units have agreed to.
Thank you. Any more discussion on that? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Okay, next up is a promotion. The motion is to approve the promotion of Brittany Comett to the HR Director position effective January 26, 26, at step one of the HR Director wage grid, and further to authorize staff to begin the hiring process to backfill the HR Assistant position. An ISO move.
We have a motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
So we posted internally, Brittany Comett applied, is qualified. We are offering her the job. She will commit on step one. And now we need to replace her as the HR Assistant. So we will begin that process and we expect that employee to be onboarded sometime in early to mid-January.
Excellent. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up, we have a retirement, and the motion is to accept the retirement of Kimberly Markort effective December 5th, 2025, and further to authorize staff to backfill the Police Records Management Technician Position. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you. Ms. Kimberly Markort has been with us how long, Chief Davis?
19 years.
19 years she's been working for the police department. So she will be missed. It's a lot of experience and knowledge going out the door, but hopefully we'll find somebody competent to replace her.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Kimberly Markort, for your service. Chairman Johnson?
All right, next up is a Teamsters Holiday Settlement Agreement, and the motion is to approve the attached settlement agreement with the Teamsters Union representing the Police Sergeants and Lieutenant addressing the payment for the 2025 Juneteenth Holiday. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
Yeah, there was, with arbitration hearing and award and the timing of it all, it worked out where we had a couple employees who used vacation time, personal time, if you have the exact term is, their floating holiday instead of the Juneteenth holiday on Juneteenth. So we're going back and reimbursing the guys who used their floating holiday for Juneteenth for 2025.
And going forward, is it the same? They have that option or?
Mr. Chair, according to the arbitrator, by January 1st of each year, the representatives or the union members will need to decide and actually formally notify us if they're going to use their floater or want to floaters or get paid for Juneteenth. That was in the arbitration award.
Okay. I just assumed some, some police officers have to be on duty that day, so they must, they must have that option.
They get paid time and half or double time if they are required to work on a holiday.
Gotcha. Okay. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Okay, next up is our employee policy manual. I think this is over half the pages of your packet this week. The motion is to approve the updated employee policy manual as presented in ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
So this encompasses a number of changes, you know, a lot of it just to get in compliance with any change, legislative changes that were made down at the state capitol this year, and a few changes as recommended from department heads as well.
Anything breaking or specific you want to mention?
Nothing that I found all that interesting.
Okay, you read it all?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes, I have a question for staff. If I kind of, could I get an estimate of the amount of time staff spent on adding and removing all these different elements regarding this particular piece of legislation, if you have a ballpark figure? Hour-wise, maybe?
Days between staff, and then also had our city attorney's firm reviewing it as well, so.
So numerous days?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
More discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Next up is some deferred assessments, and the motion out of committee is to approve the applications for deferment of assessments payable 2025, well, payable in 2026 for applicant PIDs 411-91220, 413-00682, 412-50875, and 412-50586, and further to direct staff to come back with a, an amended resolution for a qualification. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
So these are all repeat applications that were approved last year. There's nothing new. We haven't amended the resolution in a few years, and so we are going to potentially make some changes. So it will have staff bring it to us. One of the qualifying numbers is the value of the house you live in. And last time we amended it, I think we set it at 173,000 and change, which at that time was about the median home value in the city of Brainerd. But we're going to probably adjust it based on how values have changed over the last four years, or potentially change it to just say the median home value.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chesak?
Have there been any people that have applied and do in part because of their home value is not perhaps accurate? They've not been allowed to get the deferment?
I've got that. I asked that question in committee, Jeff, and the answer I received was people have called and inquired, and then when given the breakdown, they don't submit an application. So.
So we don't know.
So we don't know for sure if somebody would have qualified based on the home value amount, but.
Thank you.
If we adjust that going forward, it should be more right size.
Thank you.
Johnson, anything else, Mr. Chesak?
No.
Anyone else have discussion, questions? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our eighth and final item on the agenda is a Library Minnesota Department of Education Grant, and the motion is to authorize staff to enter into necessary agreements to administer the grant, and further to direct city administrator to send a memo to all commissions reminding them of the grant policy. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Bevins. Chairman Johnson?
So last year, the library board put the city of Brainerd's name on a grant for $422,000, and they got it. So great, good for them. They're going to make some great changes over at the library, but our name was on a half a million dollar grant, and nobody at the city even knew that. So that, that's why we have that policy. We need to remind all the commissions, there is a policy, please follow the policy. You can't just put the city's name down on any random grant you want money for. But we are accepting this, and we wish the library luck with their, their new layout.
Chairman, for that clarification. Any more discussion?
Great.
Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Johnson?
End of report.
Thank you. Moving on to 7B's. This is Safety and Public Works Committee Chairman Tad Erickson.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. We've got three items on our agenda. The first of which is discussion of service line reimbursement request for 601 South 9th. Motion coming out of committee is that the city does not participate in any of the costs for the replacement, including the cost of the main. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak. Chairman Erickson?
So you may recall that this came before us at our last meeting. Staff was directed to come back with a breakdown of the cost of the replacement. That was for the main, sanitary main only. As you can see in the packet, the total cost of the service line replacement was 10,250, and the initial breakdown, staff gave a couple options here, 1,850, and then there was an adjusted amount for just the main portion of 1,400. And in discussion in committee, staff had noted that, you know, it is typical for a certain portion of the main to be replaced in a situation such as this, and so the, the committee felt that it would be appropriate since that is, it would be normal for the main to be replaced in a situation such as this, that the city would not participate in that, in that cost.
Thank you, Chairman. More discussion, Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, I was under the understanding that the need to replace a portion of the main is because of the poor condition of the main, but our engineer has reassured us that even if the main were virtually new and in perfect condition, there would still need to be a portion replaced when this occurs. So that's what I'm essentially changing my opinion of any reimbursement on. That's why we came out of committee that way, to a certain extent, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Chesak. More discussion, Mr. Erickson?
Well, just, I, I had, you know, spoken in favor of going with adjusted cost for the city to participate to the tune of 1,400. I did vote against the motion in committee, and I would do so here as well.
Thank you. Johnson?
Yeah, I'll be voting against the motion too. I think if the citizens are repairing city stuff, the city should pay for its own stuff. I don't care about common practice of governments taking advantage of their citizens in other communities, so maybe we should too. I don't buy it. I think we should have a policy like the one Kelly brought up last meeting where if somebody's doing a sewer line connection work, we should have one of our sewer guys there to fix anything that needs to be fixed on our side, instead of just ignoring it, assuming they have to pay everything, and we'll never even have a conversation with them because we are better than them, they are the peasants, they must pay for everything because we said so, and we thought somebody else does that elsewhere too. I don't buy it. I think we should participate in the cost of our own repairs on our own stuff, so I'm going to vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson?
Mr. President, yeah, just a, a further comment from discussion. It was brought up, you know, as discussion brought up, you know, may, perhaps revising the, the city's policy on this. While we discussed this item, we, we noted that we wanted to handle this item specifically and not address the overall policy and save that for another time and just keep those two items separate. Address this specifically and not the policy in general. Just wanted to add that addition from the discussion we had.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. That just begs the question, because I heard the motion, I thought I heard the motion, and it didn't say anything about directing staff to come back with policies or anything like that, or work on what we should be doing to keep our system more proactive repairs. The motion I heard was just pay nothing, we owe them nothing, they're peasants.
I don't think that was part of the motion, but.
That's what it sounded like to me.
Right. I think the motion, in my opinion, I think you guys got the motion right. I've been thinking about this one, and I, I feel for this individual that had to pay this to replace their service line, but there was nothing wrong with our main. If there was something wrong with our main, I would be 100% in agreement, but if we're replacing perfectly good water main, or if they have to in order to replace their own line that had something wrong with it, had a poor, poor fix earlier, 10 years before, or there's roots growing in their line, that is their responsibility. That is part of owning property in, in the city, in any city. So I do understand where you're coming from, Mr. Johnson, but I'm going to vote yes on this motion. Erickson, did you have something to add?
Just in agreement with the first part of what, how Mr. Johnson characterized the motion, it had nothing to do with the, the policy. It just had to do with this specifically.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
I got Mr. Mayor here first.
Yeah, I'm just, clarification. There was or was not something wrong with the main.
Jesse?
No, the main was flowing just fine.
The main was fine. There was no issues with the main.
Yeah, there's old joints and stuff like that, but the main was flowing. The backup was not related to the main.
Had recently been checked and jetted, cleaned out. It was flowing just fine, as far as I can tell. Mr. Chesak?
Yeah, on this point, exactly. So as I stated, according to our engineer, if, if that main had been put in a week before, and it was brand new, the property owner would still have to remove a portion of that main and replace it to do this work. That, that's why I changed my opinion on this, because if we're gonna, I think that, I think it's been fully explained. I, I would lean towards Mr. Johnson's opinion on this, had, this was across the board every single time. But if we're gonna, this is where I'm, I'm prepared to make a, a motion addressing the policy, which we didn't do in committee. That's our fault, but I think that's a good plan to do that after we vote this up or down, so.
Thank you. Mr. Bevins?
Just a clarification, Mr. Chair, from our engineer, and I fully trust our engineer on this. It doesn't look fine. It looks like there's goop put around the joints, and I'm not a, I'm not a plumber or a sewer guy, but that's, that's okay. I take it. I, I'm just trying to confirm that the purple part is good in this picture. This is prior to being replaced.
This is prior being, to being replaced. Though the, the backups he was experiencing was in his Y connection, that, that part that's heading off to the right. The main is the kind of the, the north-south piece. The, the main was flowing.
But, Mr. Chair, there could be other things wrong with the Y besides the initial problem of the backup, such as it looks like it's been leaking at the joints. That's my question is, is it possible that main wasn't the cause of the backup, but still would have been best replaced at the time that the hole, my point is, there's a hole in the ground. It would make sense if there's something wrong with this main to do it now, even if it had nothing to do with the initial problem of the backup. And my question is, to clarify, there was nothing wrong with this main, not having anything to do with the backup, but at all.
That's 100%.
Mr. Dean, you have an answer for that?
Yeah, the, the main is old. It does have some cracking there, and it does have some issues at the joint, but we were not having any issues with the main at that time.
It's old, but what I'm hearing, it was not in disrepair. It was fully functioning.
It was flowing, yep.
Okay. Mr. Jaeger?
I was just saying, and remember, I think a critical part of this conversation is remember that only this residence was experiencing issues. So the main continues on down to how many further houses, which, which implies to me also that, is the main older? Yes. Should it have been, you know, if you got, if you got the hole open, do you fix it up at that time? Yes. But I think where, what swayed my opinion also, similar to Mr. Chesak, is, is that every time somebody digs open and can, and, and works around our main, they're going to have to replace a certain segment of that. I really don't want this coming back to us every single time of, this one kind of had some roots that were kind of in the main, kind of in ours and that. I think just as a general policy, when you dig up, you hooked our main, you got to replace that section, move on. That's where I'm at.
Thank you, Mr. Jaeger. In agreement with that, I think when our staff does come in and inspect these upon these repairs, we have to trust our staff in that inspection. So if we hear this, that it's functional and it didn't really necessarily need to be replaced, who are we to judge by a picture right here that it's any different? I don't want to be stuck with a bill every single time somebody has something go wrong on their own service line. I think we all have a responsibility to keep our own service lines clean. It's part of the deal. Any more discussion?
We need a roll call, please.
Yep. So if you are voting yes on this, you are voting to not have the city chip in for any of this repair. If you're voting no, you're in disagreement with that. So, Tony?
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Oday?
Yes. That motion carries.
Three?
No, three, three?
Four, three?
No, it was four to two.
Four, two.
Oh, four, two. Okay. Gotcha. I should have counted. That happened last year.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Chesak?
I was planning on making a motion, but after hearing the.
Yeah, go ahead.
Discussion, I'm not interested in changing any or addressing somebody else's.
Okay. You, you do want to make a motion, Mr.?
No, I'm not going to.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I understand, at least, I think I understand Mr. Chesak's dilemma, because I might have brought it up two weeks ago, but I, I sure hope we do go out to look at it, since there is a hole in the ground. Now, I realize that's just a visual inspection, but we also have historical data, but it would make sense. So.
I agree.
I think, I think in the case of my water main, my water shut-off valve, that was strictly a timing thing. It was one of the older versions, and so as long as a hole is in the ground, Public Utilities chose to replace it, even though it worked. Well, actually, we don't know if it worked. They never shut the water off to my house in 35 years, so maybe it didn't work. But does that make sense to at least go out and look?
It does.
And, and it appears that we did in this case.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Right, and if they would have found something different, I think we would be hearing a different recommendation.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chairman Erickson?
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Our second item is an update on the Trunk Highway 210 to Lum Park Pedestrian Bridge. Motion coming out of committee is for council to direct staff to return the funds, the carbon reduction program funds for the bridge to MinDOT. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak. Chairman Erickson?
So again, this was before us previously, and the vote from council was that we retain these funds. Discussion coming out of committee. There's a, MinDOT staff had found a way that we could get a year, another year extension for these funds. They do need to bring that to their area transportation partnership for approval, so as of now, it's not technic, we don't technically have that year extension. Staff's opinion that, you know, there's some internal deadlines that we would need to meet in, in order to deliver the project. If the ATP does not approve that year extension for us, that really puts the city at a, in a really precarious position. By accepting the funds and not getting that year extension, we would be responsible for the entire cost of this project, and we currently don't have additional funds lined up. And so the, the motion coming out of committee was to return the funds, so we wouldn't, I wouldn't be on the hook to deliver this project in a year if the ATP voted not to approve that.
Motion by Erickson?
Yeah, I had the motion. That was just a further.
Okay. Yeah, I think.
I second it.
Okay. I think this is more information than we had on the last one when we discussed this. I, I think you guys got this one right as well. This doesn't necessarily say that this is not a priority. This is still a very high priority, and we have Representative Heinzman, Senator Heinzman, fighting for some bonding for these projects, especially this one. So we don't want to take away from that, but it seems to me like this particular amount of funding could be allocated somewhere else, and that could almost be looked at as us doing a favor, and in, in the future, maybe make us more eligible for grants that could help with this project. We're not going to be able to use this in time. So it does make sense to forego this, in my opinion. Mr. Bevins?
Mr. Chair, I agree with everything you just said. I just, for, as a reminder for the general public watching, what was the total value of this bridge? 1.33 was what we're returning, but.
Around. It about six?
About $6 million, and I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep, and as it gets pushed down each year, we know those funds, that price doesn't go down.
No. There's not a sale on bridges?
Nope, not right now.
I don't know. I've asked if streets get cheaper. We don't know.
Bogo on pedestrian versus.
Mr. Jaeger?
No, I, probably not relevant now, but I did want to just point out for context for the rest that in the, at the last time this came before us, Mr. Erickson was an abstention. He chose to weigh in on this time. Just, I don't know if that matters for everyone, just so everyone has the context of how it came before us, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I just want to say that although this project itself is very expensive, I think there are alternatives that we could be looking at as well. So I think that that is one thing that we should be doing. If this is going to continue to be a barrier in which the, the price is just unrealistic, that we continue to look for alternatives that could include other crossings in other areas.
Yeah. Thank you. More discussion, Mr. Chesak?
I'm just glad we don't have to deal with Highway 210 and 371.
That's the intersection?
That's tomorrow.
We have a lot of Highway 210 to deal with in the next couple of years.
Not 371.
Correct, not, not that portion. Uh, Johnson?
Yeah, I'm a no. I had a bunch of questions last time. I've had zero of them answered. I see nothing in writing from the state on what our deadlines are for any of these processes or anything. I just, I, I'm still just in the dark on what reality is here. So I'm just going to vote no. I'm turning it back until, unless I were to feel comfortable with the timelines on it, that, I'm not.
Thank you. Anyone else? No more discussion. Let's go to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chairman Erickson?
All right, thank you. This is our last item. Third item is approval of the MinDOT, or excuse me, the Minnesota DNR Grant Application for Kuna Lake State Trail Segment East. Motion coming out of committee is to not authorize staff to apply for the Minnesota DNR Grant for Kuna Lake State Trail East Segment. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Erickson, second by Chesak. Chairman Erickson?
Yeah, so the discussion coming out of committee mostly revolved around a very similar conversation to the last item we had. You know, we've, you know, this grant amount would be about 300,000, the total project amount being 1.8 million. Similar deadline would be consistent with the, the state's biennium, and that would leave us with approximately one and a half million of additional funds that we would need to find, and we didn't feel like we wanted to put ourselves in that similar position.
Thank you. So I have a question on this for Mr. Dean, maybe. This, and this is from probably before you were with the city of Brainerd, but we did a study that you might have seen. a study that you might've seen, studying the crossing of this wetland, and you said the planning stage of this is at about 60% for that section, is that correct? So with that whole study that was done, is there more studying left to do? I mean, what is what is the rest of this planning, the 40% that's left?
Yeah, so more plan development will need to happen. From my understanding, there's probably gonna be some more soil borings that would need to be taken to get a a more thorough look at what is going on in the planned trail alignment. So there is a little bit more preliminary engineering work to do as those plans do develop, but it should be a pretty easy development from the the 60% to the 90 to 100.
Okay. So it's not like some of those studies have expired and something new has to happen?
No, the conditions really haven't changed out there since that study was done. It's pretty stable out there, other than it being a wetland.
Cuz my idea for something like this, for a a grant, would be to use this money to to maybe finish the planning stages, but I don't like the part that says 75/25 for really any of this trail. So anytime we have that grant match, makes me nervous. So I I do have to agree with the motion. Any more discussion for anyone? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Chairman Erickson?
End of report.
Thank you, Chairman Erickson. Moving on to number eight, this is unfinished business. Eight A, first we have a exception for the resignation of Paul Sandy from the EDA and the park board, both expiring in 2028, and declare those vacancies on both boards.
So moved with excitement.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Chesak. Any discussion on that? I will just say that the last meeting, we motioned to hire Mr. Sandy back, and that is the reason for his resignation. You can't be on our boards if you're a full-time employee of the city, but we welcome him back. Any more discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have eight B. This is a call for applicants, and first up, we have the Honorable Mayor Badu.
Wow. Thank you, I guess. Before we do, I have one recommendation for one Shirley Jaeger for the library board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chesak, second by Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Welcome Shirley Jaeger.
All right. We have the following boards of commissions with openings available. Charter Commission, two terms expiring 2025, two terms expiring 2026. Public Utilities Commission, one term expiring 2028. Transportation Advisory Committee, two terms expiring 2025, one term expiring 2026. We also have the EDA and the park board, as we just said previously.
All right. And as council president, I have two terms on the Water Tower Committee, and those are open-ended terms, if you're interested. Next up, we have eight C. This is approval of an updated solar development agreement at Rotary Park, and presenter I have listed is Mr. Habegars.
Thank you, Mr. President. The contractor had to include a full amount for the bond of the project, and BPU will be absorbing that additional cost of $1,720. The Utility Commission and the Park Board have both approved this amendment to the agreement, and staff is recommending approval of this updated solar development agreement at Rotary Park. And with that, can take any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Habegars. Could you just give us a quick 30-second detail of what this is?
So when we, when you first approved this, the contractor only was gonna approve our bond the project at 50%. Any projects that I would be comfortable with, needs to be approved at, they need to bond it at full amount. They were just trying to save some cost, and they were trying to absorb the city to have some liability on our parts, and we, after discussion with staff, we wanted them to fund this at the full amount.
Thank you. But this this solar project itself, it's a small solar project that is powering lights?
Right. Just at the the pavilion at Rotary Park.
Okay. Thank you. So we're looking for a motion to recommend approval of the updated solar development agreement at Rotary Park.
So moved.
Motion by Chesak?
Second.
Second by Bevins. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to eight D, this is a continuance of a public hearing and consideration for assessments for improvements 2316. And we have Jesse Dean, city engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. So at the last meeting, the council elected to hold open the public hearing to allow for the patching nearby the Lundine property, PID 41350550. Staff did include a photo in the packet showing the patch, essentially the day following the rain event that we had on Tuesday, so kinda showing how that kinda graded out and is no longer holding water in that area. So with that, staff is recommending holding the public hearing that was adjourned from the October 20th meeting, and then further to recommend adoption of the attached resolution that adopts the assessment for that PID.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Does anyone have questions? Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize. I was outside a lot Friday night.
Ate too much candy.
Ate too much candy. I certainly support staff's recommendations. My only question is, being that we had to do this project in front of this house twice, did it cost us any extra?
Mr. Dean or Mr. Habegars?
So generally, we require workmanship issues to be delivered by the contractor, so I need to follow up with Bolton Make on what those discussions have been. I can't
We don't have an answer yet, in other words.
I can't answer that question 100%.
A comment, Mr. Chair. Since the customer or the homeowner knew, and the homeowner said that the contractor knew, and we were told that the city knew, I would hope that it didn't cost us any extra to do it right the second time, or actually the third time.
Right.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Any more discussion?
Mr. Bevins, does he have Chewbacca on Halloween?
Yes, he still has it on.
Sorry.
Four out of five doctors approve camels.
Yeah, okay.
Or at least some used.
All right. If we don't have any more discussion on the item, we will go back and hold the public hearing, or reopen the public hearing that was adjourned on October 20th, 2025, in our meeting, so I'll open that now. If you're here to speak on this project, please do so now, or if you're online and you wanna speak on this project, press star three. I'll ask one more time. If you're online, press star three, or if you're in here and you wanna speak on this, please come forward. With that, we will close the public hearing. Now we're just looking for a motion to adopt the attached resolution after conclusion of this public hearing, adopting the assessment for PID 41350550.
So moved. Second.
By Chesak, second by Bevins. Any discussion on that motion?
Real quick, it's the property owner satisfied?
Must be.
They're not here?
Been in public hearing, so.
All right. Very good.
More discussion? Seeing none, Tony, call the roll.
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. Motion carries. And that does it for unfinished business. Moving on to number nine, this is new business. Nine A is consideration of a hazardous structure at 319 North Ninth Street, and this is Community Development Director James Cranwick.
Thank you, Mr. President. So 319 North Ninth Street sustained significant fire damage and has a large opening in the roof. The property owner is no longer in contact with the city, so with that, staff recommends the city council adopt the attached resolution, which orders the owner to demolish the unsafe structure or commence such repairs as are necessary to rectify the unsafe conditions on the property, as identified by the building official in Exhibit 1 to this resolution, and I can't answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cranwick. Mr. Bevins?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question for staff, if I may. Is this dwelling or residence eligible for the $7,000 a year unsafe structure forever rule?
So the vacant dwelling registry fee, they have been, this has been applied twice to this property as well.
And they've paid it?
They have not paid it. It's been assessed towards the taxes.
Okay. Thank you. Would this be, I mean, Mr. Chair, would this be normal procedure after two years of non-payment to then move forward under this?
Certainly after two years, there were, he did begin discussions with the city trying to repair the structure, reached out to us after the first fee for the $7,000 vacant dwelling, but since has had no contact with the city. And and then also since our our department has also developed a better procedure to handle with some of these fire-structured buildings. So I would anticipate in the future this moving faster.
One last question, Mr. Chair. If presuming this property owner chooses not to do anything and to ignore the city, would we, is it possible we could encumber ourselves financially and have to take it down ourselves? And what happens to the $14,000? In other words, are we creating a larger liability on the tax roll by doing this? And and I'm not saying we shouldn't, cuz this house is unsafe.
Yeah. Mr. Lengel?
Yeah, Mayor and Council. So we're following the statutory hazardous structure process here, so as soon as this order goes out, he's got a chance to respond to it. If he doesn't respond to it, as expected, and it goes into default, the judge will issue an order allowing this this city to demolish the structure, that entire cost is then assessed against the property. And as often happens in these cases in my experience, they end up not getting paid and eventually get a tax forfeit, so.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Bevins?
Unfortunately, it's what I expected.
Yeah. Yeah, you asked a lot of questions that I was thinking too, especially the the procedure of how long this takes, cuz I remember this fire, what was this, four or five years ago? Three years ago? Two? A while ago. Mr. Chesak?
What what timeframe does he have to respond before we we can take action?
I have to look at the statute. It's it's not very long.
90 days?
I'm not even sure if it's even that long.
Okay. Thank you.
But we'll, it has, we'll have to serve him first with that order, just like you would a civil lawsuit, and then it goes in there.
So worst-case scenario, the assessments and the demolition get assessed to this property, and there's somewhere around $30,000 assessed to this property. If somebody wanted to buy that property and build there, we would end up likely forgiving those assessments to get that to happen, say if Habitat wanted it, or if somebody just wanted to build a spec home there.
Well, ideally, if if somebody buys the property, then you're gonna get paid back at the closing.
Ideally.
Yes.
Ideally. But we have had that come up before, where people ask for those to be forgiven, and sometimes they do. Anyone else have questions? I think we're still looking for a recommendation to approve the attached resolution.
So moved. Second.
Motion Bevins, second Chesak. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I drive by this house every single day, and I ask James on a regular basis, what the heck's going on with this house that's been burnt down and is sitting there without a roof for two years? And I I dislike the idea that we have to tear down structures, but this is a building that is burnt out. It is a structure that needs to come down, and basically, it's just been sitting there as blight, and I I hate to say it, but it's time for it to come down, so I fully support.
Thank you. Any more discussion from council? Tony?
Jaeger?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Bevins?
Yes.
Chesak?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
O'Day?
Yes. That resolution carries. Moving on to nine B, this is a first reading for proposed ordinance 1597, amending City Code Section 1110 Cannabis, Hemp and Related Business, and this is for Connie Hillman, Finance Director.
Thank you. So on the October 6th council meeting, council provided a direction to staff regarding options for onsite sales, low potency hemp edible retailers and cannabis events. The proposed resolution, or the proposed ordinance is to incorporate the direction given. The only thing different than directed by council after legal review had to do with the duration of a cannabis event. Council's direction was to allow an organizer one event per calendar year in any four-day combination. The current draft ordinance limits a cannabis event of one per organizer in a calendar year but cannot last longer than four consecutive days. Also, as directed by council, cannabis events would not be allowed to be held in a residential district, which includes the TN2 districts. Also, as mentioned at the council meeting, the state statute for cannabis is ever-evolving. Some of the definitions have already changed from when the ordinance was originally adopted in '24. Therefore, staff is proposing to remove all definitions from the current ordinance and refer to state statute. The proposed ordinance does not require a public hearing. Therefore, if the council would like a public hearing, a motion to hold it at the November 17th council meeting should be made. So the recommended motion is to conduct the first reading of proposed ordinance 1597 and dispense with the actual reading, and the second one is discussion of inserting a public hearing at the November 17th meeting, if applicable.
Thank you, Connie. Does anybody have questions for Connie or staff? Doesn't look like it.
Moved to conduct the first reading. Second.
And to dispense with the actual reading?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay. Motion by Bevins, second by Chesak?
If Stunek was here, he'd wanna read it.
Yeah, he would. He can read it at home, though.
Yep.
All right. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we want to set a public hearing for the proposed ordinance on November 17th, 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Chesak?
Second.
Second by V. Johnson?
Bevins, Johnson?
Yes. Something like that.
It's a good team.
All right. We'll call it, we'll call this one for Johnson in the minutes. Any discussion on that? Does that work for everybody? Looks like it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. There we go. Moving on to 9C, our final item of the night. This is a discussion of a community pool with the YMCA. And again, we have Finance Director Connie Hillman.
The YMCA has approached staff with the desire to partner with the city for a community pool. Staff is seeking council's direction for staff to work with the Y to determine the amount of the Y's request of the city for an aquatic center. The recommended action is to direct staff to work with the Y to determine the Y request of the city for an aquatic center.
Thank you, Connie. Does anybody have questions? Mr. Johnson?
How does this differ from the last time we made that motion?
We had money last time.
Last time, we authorized $5,000 to the Y to explore the funding options. Now, yeah, that is a good question of how is this different specifically?
So I think there was a little confusion on what that was. We will not need to spend the $5,000 because we will bring it back to council. And if we want to go ahead and we need a bond for the aquatic center, we would use our own municipal advisor, and we wouldn't need to pay the $5,000 for the Y's municipal advisor.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, does that answer your question?
Absolutely not, but I'm supportive.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Chazak?
Can you identify what staff that would be working on this? And is there any kind of like idea of what amount of time they might need to have with our staff?
Connie?
Any idea?
You know, I really don't know. I know that they're getting their funding. They're still, their funding and their cost for the project is still in the planning phases. So until they have those planning phases or the numbers more secure, I don't think there's a lot of staff time that it would take, in my opinion. Once we get the numbers and we come back to council and council says, yes, we're interested in this ask, how do we do this? Then it's going to be more staff time working with our municipal advisor to figure out how we're going to fund the pool.
Thank you.
Chazak?
Mr. Broyles? Just wanted to add a couple things. There have been a couple meetings with Connie, Mike, and myself and Shane over at the Y. It's been not intrusive at all. Where I expect this is going to go, the Y is going, the bulk of this work is going to fall on the Y to develop this capital stack. And I presume at some point in the future, we'll bring something back to the council where the Y is saying the total cost of this project is X million, and we're getting this much from Essentia and this much from whoever the other partners are, if the county's going to partner, if the school board's going to, if the school district's going to partner, if Baxter's going to partner. But at some point, there will be a request probably back to the city that, hey, city, we're looking for this much from you. And then we could just discuss how that could be funded with our municipal advisor if that's what the council wants.
Thank you, Mr. Broyles. And the way I kind of read into this as well is not necessarily looking for the Y to come back to us with a number of how much they're asking for taxpayer funds or anything like that, but in general, just support for the project. I know they have a lot of other community partners that are supporting this project, and having the city backing them, I think, means a lot as well. Mr. Johnson, do you have more?
Just one, I'd like a date of when the council authorized the $5,000 and have staff work with the Y. I'd like to go back and review that motion, so if you could get me the date of when we did that, I'd appreciate it.
Just to compare?
Just to compare. I think we're doing the exact same thing, and I don't know why.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. We didn't have a motion yet, right?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to direct staff to work with the Y to determine the Y's request of the city for an aquatic center.
Second still.
By Beavons, second by Johnson. Any more discussion on that motion? Done, let's go to a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, same sign. Motion carries. All right, that does it for our business tonight. Moving on to staff reports. We'll always start with Tony Gage.
What?
All right, Chief Holmes. Chief Davis.
Nothing to add.
Max Hannon.
Nothing to add.
Connie Hillman.
Nothing to add.
Mike Habigors.
Nothing to add, thank you.
James Cranwick.
Thank you, Mr. President. So just wanted to update the council. It'll be a busy next planning commission meeting on the 19th. The commission will be reviewing three IUP renewals for short-term rentals, a draft RFP for the comp plan update, a request by Brainerd Animal Hospital to relocate and build a new facility on Oak Street, and then the Keepers Development Final Platte and Final PUD. And then Eric Sharpentier, the HRA, will provide an update on the infrastructure grant that was included. Essentially, we didn't receive the funding, and he'll provide an update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Cranwick. Mr. Langle?
Nothing here, thank you.
Chris Schubert?
Nothing to add.
Jesse Dean?
Thank you, Mr. President. So the roundabout is open if you haven't seen it already. And the upcoming week is going to be very, very busy on our two reconstructions. They have a lot of work to do just within the next week to get things buttoned up before winter, so it's going to be fast and furious over there. And then Hawkins did receive its new paved surface over there on Hawkins Drive today. So that's all wrapped up for outside of some tidying up.
Did you say base surface?
The, it's finished surface.
Finished, okay. Excellent. I think I drove by there yesterday, and it was dirt, so very good. Eric Sharpentier?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. As James mentioned and was in your packet tonight, we were informed on the 23rd of October that we were not a recipient for the Greater Minnesota Housing Infrastructure Grant that we had helped and the city applied for, for that Outlot E and F project in Brainerd Oaks. Forty-eight applicants, 21 of those applicants were afforded some funding. State had about 8 million available, and applications were at about 17, a little over 17 million. So very unfortunate that we didn't get funded for that. James, myself, and some other city and HRA staff met with the developer today just to kind of plot our course for next steps on that development. We do still believe it will be happening for 18 twin homes, maybe a couple of more, depending on a redesign. And we're looking to still close some gap for the funding there, but HRA and city staff will be discussing that with the developer and hoping for a spring start for that. So while we didn't get funded for that, we are, James and I are going to speak with Minnesota Housing tomorrow just to understand why we were not successful. So hopefully in upcoming requests, we can be more successful. That is all I have.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah.
Can I ask him a question?
Yeah, go for it.
Yes, Eric, can you tell me the dollar amount again that we were looking for from this funding? 200?
Yes. Yeah. Councilman Chazak, we're requesting $170,000.
Okay, so $170,000 essentially for the infrastructure, and they're going to have 18 homes.
That's correct.
Nine twin homes.
Correct.
And we couldn't get $170,000 for 18? It seems like the ratio there is extremely advantageous for us. It just surprises the dickens out of me. We can't get $170,000 out of 8 million available to get 18 homes. Is there any way with the state, the group that's responsible for allocating this money, is there, can we ask our legislators to put some sort of request in to find out what do we need to do? I mean, it wasn't like we're asking, that's a small, that's a small amount for the overall project. I thought that would be something they'd lean on more favorably, but apparently that isn't how they determine their, I'm giving you a lot of stuff here, but can you weigh in on that at all?
So Councilman Chazak, again, Mr. Cranwick and I will be talking with Minnesota Housing tomorrow, kind of like an exit meeting on why we may not have been chosen or why we didn't point high enough for that. So hoping to get some of those answers for staff by tomorrow, and then, you know, we certainly can report back to council. I do agree that we were pretty well-leveraged on this, and we're optimistic that we could get some funding. You know, the problem being, everybody wanted funding, or not everybody, but a lot of people wanted funding. Forty-eight applicants, 21 got funding. As I reviewed the communities that did get funding, there wasn't anything that jumped out to me other than the fact that maybe we were a large enough community where we may have lost points for that. We'll try to get that drawn out from the state if we can, and we'll hopefully be more successful in the future.
So it's just barely over $10,000 per unit. That's crazy.
Under, under $10,000. So thank you for that update, Eric, and not to make you feel like you're in interrogation chamber, but to piggyback on that question, I believe last year, the big project downtown at 805 Laurel Street was denied from the same pool, correct?
Different program. That was for the workforce housing development program. We also did apply for the Outlot E and F project for that as well, and we were not successful for either of those.
Okay, I was just going to ask for an update on that, so they're still working towards funding, but didn't receive any this year.
For 805, yes, I have a follow-up meeting with them actually on Thursday of this week to hopefully just continue that conversation on what their next steps, what their next logical steps are to get the development moving forward for 805. It is still something that they are very much committed to, as I've reported back to council previously. They do have a good amount of money invested in the property and do own that outright. It is a timing issue at the moment, obviously, to find some more resources to get that to the start line.
Thank you. Look forward to hearing more in the future, and it looks like Mr. Mayor has a question.
Yeah, just one quick follow-up. Can you remind me what funding was used to tear that building down?
I believe, Mr. Cranwick might be able to put his finger on the exact wording of that, but that was the funding that had been utilized through deed, I do believe.
Called Main Street Development.
The Main Street Development funding was used to tear down the building.
Not all of it, I don't think.
Oh, perfect. Okay, thank you. That does enough.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpentier. Next up, we have Administrator Broyles.
Just a couple things. Paul Sandy is beginning tomorrow, so we are happy to have him rejoin the team and Charter Commission meeting late afternoon on Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Broyles. Next up, we have the Honorable Mayor.
Oh, wonderful, folks. Well, we learned a couple things tonight. We learned that green energy is expensive. We also learned that if a cannabis event is happening, it may not last for longer than four consecutive days. So for all of you out there having cannabis events, hard stop at four days. Can't go longer than that. And just on a positive note, as the liaison to the park board, our last meeting took forever, longest meeting in the history of meetings. I don't know what's going on over there. We got to quicken the pace a little bit, little bit of slowness at the park department. But three different groups sat in front of that park board and made pitches for partnering with, the amount of people that are interested in being in our parks, doing things in our parks, and partnering with this city has greatly increased, and it is very good to see. No, one of them was water skiing, Gabe. Turn your microphone on if you're going to speak, please, so the people at home can hear it. One of them was water skiing, and we love water skiing. But I will, I'll just say this. It's a testament to the concept and the philosophy of butts in seats. If we are going to have these parks and they're going to cost as much money as they do, we should continue to have a policy that says we want to see people using them, and it is working because they are coming and they're sitting in on these extremely long meetings for an opportunity to be in our parks. And I just want to thank them for doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on to council member reports. Let's start with Mr. Chazak.
Yeah, those park board meetings are long even without a mayor's report. Couple of things, Public Utilities met last Tuesday, and some very, I think, very interesting discussion about a couple of items. One was the electric vehicle charging station. A gentleman from Tanner Motors came in, and that is a very, if you're not really sure how that all works and the costs, when you have a Level 3 charger, it can be extremely expensive to start charging. The cost of electric is enormous. So that's something you might want to check out. And also, we talked about water leakage from the curb stop to the house. Before it gets to the meter, they can tell there's water leaking, and they want to figure out a policy of how to get the property owner to fix that because that is their responsibility, as Mr. Beavons was alluded to. So that's a, that's a lot, a lot of water. Essentially, 10% of our water is through leakage and flushing and that type of thing, approximately 30 million gallons a year, which is a lot. We also talked about the pilot, which I would encourage everybody to listen to, and I see that the utilities, they get a, they'll be present at the Charter Commission meeting on Wednesday. Also, I've been meeting with Mr. Bullock on two occasions now with staff. First was our administrator, Public Works Director, and Jesse Dean. They came back today, and Mr. Habigors and Mr. Dean, we had a nice discussion with Mr. Bullock, and I believe Jesse will be coming back. I just got a quick question. Did he get back to you and ask that that not be brought back until December or later? Could you, he's out of town for the whole month. Is that something, if you're going to bring it back, you could wait till then perhaps?
That's up to the council when they want to see it back.
I'm sorry?
That would be up to the council. That's fine.
So you need direction to come back at a later date?
If the council's okay with it, then we can come back at a later date.
So I would just ask the council that, perhaps I make a motion that, for Mr. Bullock's, the recommendation from staff to come back be held off until sometime December or later?
Did we have a previous date stated for that to come back?
No.
Oh. If it's an open-ended date, it sounds like.
Well, are you?
Have a motion if you want, but.
Well, I guess you're planning on coming back in the next meeting?
That was my understanding, was the motion was after we met with Mr. Bullock, it was going to come to that next meeting. So if the council's okay with waiting until December when he's back in town, I'm okay with that.
I don't think there's any rush. It's been quite a few years of that discussion.
If you wouldn't mind, that's all, he mentioned it to me, so. And then I was disappointed because at our meeting where we directed staff to do the downtown street plowing, I asked a very specific question if we have all the equipment we need. And I was told, yes, we do. And then I find out that there's a request to perhaps get more equipment to do that job at the last park board meeting. So I don't know how that happens, but it's frustrating to go from one meeting to another, and the answers are different. So that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chazak. Mr. Beavons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did talk to Chief Stunek a couple days ago. He's doing well, wishes everyone well, expects to be back as soon as possible, and said while he's gone, if we want to go to midnight, he's okay with that. The Charter Commission is meeting on Wednesday at 4:30, where we will discuss the one item which previously could not be discussed. So that should be exciting. Number four, the project management team met for Highway 210. The project starts next year and goes for two years, and if you like red concrete, you're going to like our project.
And AstroTurf.
And AstroTurf. It's going to be beautiful. Today, I went to the long-term, longtime Brainerd businesswoman, Nyla Patrick's funeral. It was very sad. She was a business owner since I've been in town for at least 35 years. I met her daughter, Erin. Erin gave the eulogy, and here's how she started the eulogy. My mother, Nyla, was a difficult person. Obviously, she knows Nyla as much or better than all of us. And finally, today is my wife Sue's birthday, so I want to wish her a happy birthday. And we did 1,738 pieces of candy.
Excellent.
End of report. We did it, we do, I had to keep up with the Jaegers.
Thank you, Mr. Beavons. Moving on to Mr. Jaeger.
Airport ticker time. All right, this week's airport ticker is, we have a commission meeting coming up this Thursday, so I'll have some more information following that, of course, as we will be perusing the applications received by all of our applicants for the new director position. We are hanging the longster in the foyer tomorrow. So if anybody wants to get out there, I believe dispatch has been notified, and hopefully that'll be a big happening out there, is that guy will be hanging from the rafters hopefully early in the day tomorrow. We had a visit by Congressman Staub, I'd like to thank him for coming out, checking in on how our airport is functioning with the shutdown. It does have some impact, which I will just briefly touch upon. It's mostly affecting our Soloy and North Point out there at the airport in that parts and pieces that go in and on airplanes have to be approved by the FAA before they can be sold, moved, and so forth. So unfortunately, we've got some disruption with one of our, with really one of our key tenants out there at, with North Point and Soloy out there. So unfortunately, that has got a little bit of impact. The good news is virtually no impact to GA or to our daily flights. It'll be in and out of there. We're holding our own out there, and for the indefinite future, it looks like we're going to be okay. So good news there. And I'll follow up at our next meeting with the findings from this Thursday's coming meeting. Good news, I just wanted to point out, Halloween is a pretty epic happening in North Brainerd. Of course, we do a little spread out there. We had a brawny turnout. This was our biggest year. It was a weekend Friday, obviously, so we saw 2,250 kids over there on Bluff, and we saw 2,250 costumes. I did want to point out, we generally will kind of pick the best costume that shows up. And this year, first of all, it has to be homemade. If it's store-bought, you're out, instantly out. The best homemade costume this year was three young ladies who came up. One, the first young lady was an iceberg. The second young lady was the first half of the Titanic with lights, full lighting,